All right, good evening. This is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-Cunitide School Board. Tonight is Monday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we are located at the TCU Performing Arts Center. I will call this meeting to order at six o'clock P. M. Our roll call finds all present, and Cindy will be about ten minutes late. Um, next we'll have our administrative report.
All right, uh, some highlights in the reports that were shared. Uh, it is testing season. MCA's are winding down. In fact, uh, this Friday is the end of the window for science. And um, we are also at a point in the elementary where they're doing a lot of fast testing. And just a reminder that the MCA is more of a snapshot. Uh, where we're at as a school in comparison to other districts in the state and and even a a state average. Um, the FAST test, which is given several, uh, three times throughout the year, gives more of a picture of how a student grows from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and also the growth that they show from year to year. And so um, MCA's are are kind of falling by the wayside. We're getting more and more requests to opt out since they are not required for graduation. Um, also, uh, our TOSSs have started the the first steps of the English Language Arts Curriculum Review. Um, it's an action item to act on the science tonight, so they uh, just got done with that, and they will now be starting work on that. Um, and then David Bernard, our new director of teaching and learning, will continue that process as he transitions into the district. In the district office, uh, Gene Kopp and Maggie Grimm led a virtual meeting last Friday uh, with our staff regarding health and dental insurance, open enrollment. And I really need to give them uh, kudos for a great job. Um, insurance can be very confusing for many people, and uh, they simplified it um, really to um, if I I always look at it and figure if I can see, understand it, then anybody can. And so I felt good because I could understand what they're talking about. And the other piece that that they really encouraged is um, they encouraged our staff that if they had questions, use our advisors, yeah, because that's why we have those people to support us. And so they did a wonderful job. And then community education has been really busy. Um, Lane and Natalie made presentations to Rice County and Greater Mankato United Ways on the Little Titans Program, and it's kind of a way to try and sell and hopefully get a donation towards scholarship. Um, we've been very fortunate in the donations we received, and honestly, there's still a a high need for that. So they are waiting to find out on that. Uh, their travel soccer teams are starting competitions, and the luck, uh, younger levels have have already been getting out there. And um, you know, Chris is involved in that. And then summer res- registrations, a lot of programs going on and have summer registrations coming in and and even preschool registrations for the fall, so kind of wrapping up one year and getting ready and going into the next one.
All right, thank you. We do have one addition to the um, to the agenda tonight, and that is under uh, new hires Chandler Reisman, a special education teacher at the TCU High School. So that's just an add. So I will seek a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Trevor Holland, to approve the agenda with noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed six zero. Okay, under the consent agenda, there's a lot of stuff here. So uh, we have approval of our minutes of our April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, regular school board meeting. And April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, a special school board meeting. Under personnel, we have some employment ending. Uh, Sherry Fonseca, a paraprofessional at the TCU High School. Uh, Jenna Novatny, Kid Zone RAP Site Leader, TCU Lonsdale. Allison Valman, a special education teacher at the TCU High School. Um, Heather Olson, Yearbook Co-Advisor, TCU High School. Alicia Claire, School Readiness, TCU Lee Center, and Holly Spencer, Director of Special Services. Under new hires, we have Elena Dobson, a general music, um, instructional music teacher at TCU Montgomery and TCU Lonsdale. Uh, Grant Golson, an instrumental music teacher at TCU Lee Center and TCU Montgomery. Um, Allison Claire, kindergarten teacher, TCU Lee Center. Kurt Schroder, uh, special education teacher, TCU High School. And Chandler Reisman, a special education, TCU High School. Under leave of absence, we have Jennifer Gerties, special education teacher, TCU Lee Center. Tanya Bulmer, fourth grade teacher, TCU Lee Center. And Katie Marcel, paraprofessional, TCU Montgomery. We have one job description change, and that's payroll, human resource specialist. Under contracts, work agreements, and work policy, we have a few here. We have our community education director, student activities director, seven through twelve, our TCU food service employees, facilities director, payroll, human service, uh, human resources specialist, district office administrative assistant, and accounts payable, accounts receivable clerk. We have approval in the bills of the amount of five hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. And also our finance report, I will seek a motion uh, to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Josh Belkey, second by Chris Velasquez, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed six zero. Uh, next we'll move on to our open forum, and I believe there have not been any um, requests to speak to the board this evening. So we'll move on to informational items. Uh, first update is our enrollment update.
Um, enrollment is down overall for the District Four. Um, kind of interesting, we've we've seen some families that um, have moved out of the district and actually even moved out of the state. And in checking with them, we're asking the questions as they were notifying us. They indicated is nothing with the district, it's just simply a family decision. Um, employment, location, um, it's just some changes. So um, down four from last month, but still um, at a nice number.
Next, we have Site Logic here to give us an update.
Yeah, and so we've got Jake Berg and Matt Helgerson here. And Site Logic, obviously, has been doing a comprehensive assessment, and now we're kind of digging into some of that long-term facilities maintenance information. So I know Jake needs a connection, and I'll let him get hooked up.
I told you it was scary. That's why I need to present these, because I could.
You guys can slide out if you want. There's a button, I think, on it. Push up. There you go.
Thank you again for having Spirit of the Week. Mr. Lonnie mentioned we want to provide an update, more long-term facilities maintenance oriented. When we last got together in February of two thousand and twenty-two, we delivered our facility assessment report. It's kind of the report card where the district is at. Um, from there, we laid out a tentative schedule, uh, some comprehensive asset assessment review in the summer. Um, that's where we would provide the potential facility improvements, um, as well as cost budgets and some potential workshopings with community engagement. What we're going to present to you today is a potential alternative path based on some conditions that we're bringing forward to you now. So want to provide a little bit of a market conditions update. Um, things are changing quite rapidly, so some new information we want to bring forward. Before I begin, this is our financial display, our permanent disclosure. I'm not a financial municipal advisor. Do not take your financial advice from me. Please consult with your municipal advisor. I like, I do watch the news, read the news like all of you, and even every, you can't just watch the news without hearing about inflation or supply chain issues. Uh, it's the same things that are affecting, you know, the construction market right now. Uh, so construction escalation prices continue to continue to rise, we've all of them. Um, the big change, though, has really been in the financial market with the the inflationary pressure and the monetary control of pricing interest rates. So this is really kind of signaling a paradigm shift in um, construction for schools. You know, the period two thousand eight, two thousand twenty-one, those low interest rates, emerging high economic growth. There was a lot of, a lot of time and runway to do projects. Uh, this was kind of wait really planned meticulously. That is changing very fast now. Um, you know, two thousand and twenty-two belongs beyond for now, entering a different cycle where it's going to be rising interest rates, higher rates trying to constrain economic growth. Um, the remedy reports to all this inflation, the rise in interest rates. Uh, the Federal Reserve has indicated that, you know, after next several, five to six meetings, they intend to raise rates, raise around a quarter percent. We just witnessed a a half percentage increase last week. Um, you know, what does it mean, again, on a ten million dollar bond? Um, you can see a half percentage increase there, a ten million dollar bond, an extra six hundred thousand dollars in in interest that you can pay. You know, if you were to wait potentially from comparing today to February of next year on the same ten million dollar bond, the proposed interest rate increases could add up to as much as two point two million dollars going. That is additional interest you can pay, so if you had a budget cap of ten million, that would be ten million dollars less worth of work you'd be able to do um, in your school. Well, as I mentioned, construction costs, materials continue to increase. Uh, again, it's kind of volatile, you'll see steel will way up while um, some others have come down a little bit over in flywood. If clients come back down, or I wouldn't say normalize them yet, but have come back from the crazy highs we've seen this time last year. But overall, uh, the construction cost is outlook is going to continue to escalate. You can see from our, from our left in two thousand and nine here, hovering around a hundred percent all the way until, you know, from two thousand and twenty, you see really the big jump in in escalation, starting in uh, Q one of two thousand and twenty, but really ramping up uh, towards the end of last year. So what does this all mean in context for Tri-Cunitide? Uh, you know, again, an example, uh, maybe it's a ten million dollar bond. Here's an example of an eight million dollar project. Factoring in construction escalation of about ten percent, um, which is kind of averaged over the different materials and the receiving of our project history from the previous year and a half. Um, with all the interest rate increases, uh, that same eight million dollar construction budget would be just over ten million uh, a year from now. So pretty, pretty large impact potentially, um, with escalation as well as increased increases. The reason we're bringing this information to you now is, again, we talked about, you know, kind of our original timeline of coming back, getting to the community gauge this summer, um, then coming back later with the forms of our consensus on master plan for the district. We wanted to bring forward the data a little bit early for you guys, so you can decide what, if anything, you may want to do with it. Uh, provide the opportunity to to look at your physical needs here this spring um, and potentially have the the option to to act on that this spring and summer. So again, as we look at the physical needs, um, our assessment rating chart is here for review. We've got excellent up to a log there from green to red. Real, real briefly looking at the buildings, um, it'll recap the high school, Montgomery, the center. Um, things are going pretty well there, some things to plan for in the in the mid to longer term future. But really, when we went over this in February, we talked a lot of the center sites adding more of the physical needs, more of the kind of immediate and short-term priorities. Put the motion to the bottom, right, should say long-term primary. Thank you, Matt. And Lonsdale, the mission of the city, yes, that's correct. So again, as we look at the schools, these graphs, again, the blue charts reflect the asset life expectancy. Um, the orange would be its current age, uh, red would be where it's over eight. So again, you have the, see the high school here, just a couple of small items that are over in really good shape. We get to the center, K eight, uh, again, a lot more infrastructure needs all around. Things have been aging out, a lot more need there. The primary facility, uh, again, there's been some work down there, but facilities have been on the east, taking care of. Montgomery, a few items there, as well as some older air conditioning equipment, some older systems that need to be replaced. We've got it pretty good shape. And we get to Lonsdale, their new facility, again, just a couple of those shorter, uh, life cycle ones that are beginning to take jobs. So our comprehensive assessment overview, the data we have to do um, to to bring forward today, is really going to be focused on your physical needs. So the community engagement work we talked about doing, that's planning for the longer term future. Uh, talking about potentially remodeling spaces, reimagining what education looks like. Uh, what we're talking about today is kind of a nutshell. So your heating equipment, your plumbing, your electric bulb, those are what we'd say would be physical needs. Uh, so considerations on some of the budgets we prepared is, they're not quotes, so we didn't go out and contact a plumber to see what it costs, they're professional estimates. Um, and wherever it makes sense, we provide three different options, a good, better investment. So those are all different, different pros and cons associated with those potential projects, um, all at different investment levels. Again, our budgets, uh, we kind of triangulate, triangulate this from from three different sources. There's industry databases we follow for those. Um, we really rely heavily on our local recent experience with projects. Um, we do well over about a hundred million dollar construction in the Minnesota market for a year, so we have a really good handle on what projects and materials and contractors cost, um, as well as factoring in long-term. I'll briefly introduce the project selection matrix, and again, I don't expect you to read this, but what the team has done is gone through, and for all the physical needs, they've put together potential solutions, um, as well as cost budgets associated with those. You'll see the familiar color code in here, asset condition tied in. So this ties into the project selection, so you can look and see what condition that's in, um, as well as this priority column, which I'll get to here in a minute. The diagram in a little more detail, um, we'll start out with a short description for the uh, the metro within the facility, as well as the potential ideas and opportunities of what the, what that project would be. We also have a brief description of the existing conditions. And again, as I mentioned, uh, kind of the life expectancy data, asset condition assessment, and the priority column. Um, we also will identify the potential funding sources here as well. And then their cost, their costs in the project year associated during the ride. So because we are doing long-term master planning with the district, um, when we go through our full exercise, uh, part of that will be checking projects into a year. So you may say we'll defer this uh, air handle replacement until two thousand and twenty-eight. So we can check that to two thousand and twenty-eight, and it will escalate the the future cost to that year, so you know what we're looking for in that year. With all of these potential projects, and again, I'm coming to say it's a, it's probably a good idea to look at maybe doing some of these things, um, with the current market conditions. Uh, the question becomes how, how do we prioritize what's important? We give you a starting point, so we do an advanced prioritization. Our team of engineers and architects and professionals have sat down and ranked them in terms of needs throughout the building. From there, we'll dive into the district, you all, you all are in the driver's seat to to help prioritize these projects. And we'll do so through, through this this prioritization matrix here. Each of these categories, so will will be weighted based on current condition, its interconnection with other systems, um, impact the educational environment, as well as student community perception. And again, we have columns rated here for district priorities. So any of the rankings within here in this advanced prioritization, the district can change. Any of the weighting up on top here, again, the district totally in the driver's seat. We like to provide a starting point for you to start from. Based on that prioritization, here is currently how the needs roll up. And again, this is physical infrastructure-wise. Uh, again, you'll see some big numbers down here. However, I just would like to to remind that this is in the context of a long-term facilities management plan. So yes, there are things that need to be looked at, is potentially addressed in the short term. However, there's things that need to be planned for mu- much into the future. And again, this is an example of that work we do to plan in the future. So you can see an example here of a school that had a a big project planned for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, it's what we commonly see, called the catch-up and keep- keep-up approach. So they do a lot of large projects that address their high priority needs. After that, they utilize their annual state funding to keep up with all of the deferred maintenance. So this is part of the the long-term planning over over the living year. And again, within that long-term plan, you look at all of the different sources of funding you have, kind of each bucket, um, or lever, and when to draw on them. As we look at the potential next steps, um, you know, what, if anything, do you want to do with this information? You can always, of course, do nothing. You can continue master planning, so as as we mentioned, there's the, we're on course now to to begin potential community engagement work this uh, this summer. Or we could review some of the high priority needs and look to see what, if anything, makes sense for a two thousand and twenty-three project. Some potential next steps and timelines associated with that. Um, we've, we've met and presented this information to administration line uh, on April twenty-ninth. We're here tonight providing the update, and again, some potential next steps to meet with potentially the facilities committee um, in the coming weeks, and then potentially come back and provide an additional update as we work around.
Step one, I'll turn it over to the question that we're.
In just a little bit, we are, um, I'm working with the three board members that are on the facilities committee to set up a date, um, and have a little bit of a longer session for Matt and Jake to come in and really dig deeper with that group to maybe see what their thoughts are on with that. And then also, at that same time, we are all, um, Gene is working on getting some information from our municipal advisor Baird on the, in just what the funding options are. We can talk about, you know, what what projects might we view as being priorities, but we also need to know what option are we going to use for the funding of it, too. And so that whole piece, looking at um, um, at some of the priorities, and then also looking at the funding. And again, that's a facilities committee, um, first, and then maybe they come back with some recommendations to the full board, or at least some ideas of what can be done. And again, this is all, these are all looking at um, LTFM-type projects. Um, this is not educational, functional, adding things to where we are already. It's getting things caught up a little bit, so, you know. If anybody has questions for Jake or Matt?
So are we moving ahead with the community?
Yep.
Thing that's happening, for sure.
Yep, we are um, working, we'll be working, getting something on our website, and then sharing it with the media so that people can actually submit. And um, the only, I I did talk to Darren Overton, is is who um, Site Logic has working with their community engagement. Um, when we started talking about timing, he just, his only statement was, their history has shown July is really a tough month to have community engagement, because people aren't coming in for meetings in July.
So what are, what are we looking for in these meetings in September?
His suggestion was maybe August, because people will start thinking school again then.
Sure.
When you kind of start bringing it together, you know, it would be August. And then I think, based on that timeline, they would likely have, uh, committee would be in a position to make recommendations to to the board, um, maybe it'll come up as soon as November, I'm afraid.
Okay. Superintendent um, Cypher and Gene, what is our long-term facilities budget amount for this year? Approximately?
About a few thousand dollars a year. Good rundown, um, in LTFM, um, that we have, you know, obviously construction. Is that before the last, in the most recent years? Um, but I think there's some big projects coming up, that'll be part of that, coming July, we've done that. And I hope some of that helps it come quick, um, big group. And then there are some other, um, issues that, a lot of the time you're talking about, there are some other, there's some kind of new funding tools. Um, they all kind of have different pros and cons.
Thank you, guys.
So. What everybody, one of the, one of the, yeah, levers that we use as we break through the recent period of community is a lot of the facilities into our air quality bucket, which is, doesn't it cover your regular LTFM? Which is a benefit, which is an annual school tax credit benefits. It's a board authority potential as well. And um, it allows you to take care of some of those infrastructure needs that will workshop with the facilities committee, specifically on mechanical systems that influence or affect indoor air quality. So air hand crews, um, controls, some of the air hand crews, those types of systems. Given the board, some choose to move forward. So that's, again, the the most significant lever that we see. Obviously, they're bonding against your regular LTFM, to be able to get more bang for your bucks of a seat and take advantage, so that economy scale comes up. So, again, if you need centers, pros and cons, you have to look at all of the different factors, which is why any school site would be involved and see what effects are, and what will.
And there's, there's those levers that you have, and then there's, and and we've had some brief discussion, both finance and with the full board. You also have some, some drops coming, because we have some stuff coming off. And um, so some of that, if you, if you work it, if you time it right, it can have less of an impact. Uh, our situation's a little bit different, um, with the two districts coming together. Our situation's a little bit different with the two districts coming together, and Gene has looked into that, so it's really hard to say it's a tax neutral across the district.
Right, so there's a learning or a needs or, we have, so there's a need to, we do have, still have some tax differences between the former 382 and the former 384, in terms of how our section of school district has. And so that will continue for another 10 years or so, or maybe with that, but as a separate commitment, we can have some debt of its retiring. So there could be some opportunities with some taxes, but it, it would not be the same across some areas just because of some of those, you know, consolidation costs. And then this is the kind of half of other, our, we have a lot of funding tools, which is great if you have it, if you can be, you know, the things to think about are, you don't get a company for nothing, you just like, you do, there's schools where you can take whatever you should get and get it earlier. So you, you know, it's just kind of like a squat there, some, some tax saving, some of the, you know, next to tax credit, but essentially it's staying over there and making interest. And the other piece is you can get more revenue, but that's to come in some of our stuff that we're, we're taxed here. So we are engaging with here, I think, submitted with, of the way we can circle those general conversations, and it'll be pretty much, unless you, another. So I think it's done that just to explore, kind of like, rough numbers, of what that might look like and all those things that could be.
My question is, that list that you guys ranked everything, that's going to go to our facilities committee, right? And so they'll kind of give a recommendation. So then will that list that's narrowed down then go to our community group and then a recommendation coming from that? So are we going from a big list to a smaller list to a smaller list?
So kind of two different, I guess, parallel paths. So when you, when you go to the community group, they will be able to see the
The full.
The full, the whole project costs and everything, maybe that information will make a more decision. So that's kind of the, the second path, the one we're talking about right now, is bringing the, the focus list on physical needs to the facility committee and having the facility committee, you know, looking at what, if anything, on that list is, do they want to narrow it down and bring it back to, to the full board for consideration?
Okay, thank you.
So back to the committee, assembling the committee. I know we talked about kind of, you know, farmers, business owners, possibly some students, faculty, stuff like that. Who, we never did talk about who's going to be in charge of running that group up and making sure that we have a good vast variety of people that kind of, so we have an even playing field. Who's going to do that and what's timeline?
I guess my, my thought is that on the website, they would be able to submit an interest in being on it, but then, and there will be three questions, four questions that they'll have to answer. And the bottom line is, I think this board should determine, okay, because we don't want, I don't think you want a committee that is heavy on a certain area of, you know, the district, or a certain, you know, if it's heavy in a certain business. I think you want to have a good representation. And, and I think it's even, Darren and I talked about this a little bit, is I think it's okay to have a person or two on there that maybe has some real concerns about it because maybe we can educate them and get them to have a better understanding of district needs and where this is all coming from. So before, there, it is not a case of just because you submit this interest, I think that's just giving us a pool. And if it's 30 and it's a good balance, we may say, you know what, let them all be on. But if it's 30 and it's 20 from one community, five from another, five from another, then I think we better take a look at, okay, we got to get this balanced out better. And so honestly, when Darren told me that August might be the best time, it made me feel like it gives us a little more chance to get a good balance on that committee or in that community group.
And basically, our role will be just getting the word out too, to do that in terms of community.
I just want, for those that are interested, want to sample like farmers, so they can plan the time commitment around harvest and everything else.
Good questions. Any other questions?
Do you consider a boiler an air handler? That's not air handler.
No, they're two separate pieces of equipment. As Matt said, there's the indoor air quality for the third equipment mechanism. Boilers sometimes can be included in that or not. It gets kind of technical, so if you're, again, improving ventilation, systems designed for the current after extender, pre, early 2000, they bring in less outside air, so you need less heating capacity than, so if you're bringing, putting in a new system that brings in more outside air, you need additional heating capacity, you may, then it may qualify to replace that boiler with the ventilation system, and it's all based on the capacity.
So we have you guys make sure that goes through as an air handler. Thanks.
And I think really the reality is, if, if we're really honest with ourselves about this, the work that we're talking about with the facilities committee right now is, okay, what are the red items on there that are really the highest priority? That's really what we're looking at, if, if we're going to be honest about things. What are the ones that are we going to really try and get off and, and view as the highest things that, let's get going on those, so that we can get some of that off?
Yeah, it's kind of the things again, right now, based on the conditions, take a little thing you know you need to do, and then you can kind of roll up your sleeves and see what you, what other things you may want to do in the future, but take care of what you can now. Again, the state provided that funding level, that board authority for the very freezing, mission critical infrastructure to deal with things.
And it's really giving our facilities committee members a chance to, to hear more, get in-depth, and then bring back and share.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Matt, Jake, appreciate that.
Are you going to hop it up here again? I'll hop over, thank you. All right.
There we are.
Okay, back up. All right, committee reports, cue comp.
All right, we had our meeting in April 20th, I believe it was. We reviewed the April early release and got some really positive feedback, spent some time talking about our May early release, which is this Wednesday, the last one of the year, and that will have pre-K and kindergarten meeting to get some alignment, science curriculum update and planning, assuming the board approves that tonight, and then some profile of graduate work related to respect and equity. And then the last two items was a review of the end of the year dates. We talked about when things are due and clarified anything that people had. And just a reminder that our last meeting is May 18th.
Thanks, Sonny. Finance?
Yep, Matt, a couple of weeks ago, spent a lot of time going over the budget. One of the big topic of discussion was a couple of staffing and compensation requests. Kind of a general theme was we felt some of the requests were more of a item for negotiation rather than a make a decision as we go, so that's kind of where we were at with that. We also reviewed some furniture requests from various sites. There's a couple of sites that are having some aging furniture, so discuss that and budgetary impacts regarding that. As we're just discussing some facility needs, funding, so we won't blabber that point. I think it's pretty obvious. Then also just got an update on employee contracts, negotiation status, and how those are impacting the budget. Then we also reviewed some vendor contract renewals, so pretty happenin' meeting, so went over a lot.
I was, I was busy. All right, thanks, Josh.
Yep.
Next, we'll move on to new business. First up would be our donations for the month. Chris, if you want to.
The school board of independent school district number 297, that's the distribution column gift, and the ministry, that's intended by the donors. The center PTO for the design project, $10,000. Montgomery Knights of Columbus, community event summer youth sports, $1,000. Speaker family donated a standing faulty physician's standard. First state bank for the center for middle school robotics, $100, and logistics instruction for the middle school robotics, $100.
Perfect. Chris has introduced the resolution, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I need a roll call vote. Josh?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Marcia's a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Chris? Resolution has passed for the donations by roll call vote, 6-0. Next, we move on to our science curriculum.
This is just a follow-up to the presentation that Mr. Flugum, Ms. Walshkog and their group did last month. I think pretty thorough in their presentation, all in the budget, I think all ready to go.
I'll seek a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Chris Velasquez, second by Trevor Holland, to approve the science curriculum recommendation and expenditures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 6-0. Next up is our 22 revised budget. Gene, which one do you want me to pull up, just a summary?
The, 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 the board, your, your, your plan to revise the, 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 the board, as to the board, the, 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 for session, it contains my funds and it has the, 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 the actual audit of results. And the, the, the 22 this year begins 21, I mean, what, and it's very.
Okay. Yeah, and you don't have to, yep. I'll seek a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Josh Belkey, second by Chris Velasquez, to approve the FY '22 revised budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 6-0. I believe that is it for the evening, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Trevor Holland, to adjourn the meeting at 6:39 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 6-0. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.